Hi, everybody. Good evening. We have just a minute before it's the time to officially call the meeting to order, but that does give us time to go through what's on our agenda, as is our habit, so that everyone will be on the same page. First of all, our thanks, as always, to Kim in the BevCam booth, who has us streaming on BevCam, so that folks can follow us live or watch later at your convenience. So, thank you, Kim, as always, for being here. Tonight, we have one speaker from the public who's signed up to speak, and so we'll have that speaker right at the top of our agenda. Then, we do have two posted public hearings, one for 7:30 and one for 7:45. And if there are members of the public hoping to speak in those public hearings, you can sign up on the sign-up sheets over on the table by the window. One has to do with a national grid order, and the other is cash appropriation to match a matching portion of a grant, so it would be to speak on those topics. Then, we have some regular business to take care of, and then we'll break for subcommittee work briefly, come back to finish it all up. So, with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Hausmann?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Spang?
Here.
St. Hilaire?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Spang, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Spang. So, as I mentioned, we do have one member of the public signed up to speak, and for those who are following at home or watching later, I'll just remind everyone that this is a spot that's available on our regular meeting agendas. We have spots for up to five speakers from the public at three minutes apiece, and those spots are first come, first served. They can be signed up for no later than 9:30, the day of the meeting, by contacting Ms. Kent, and she can let you know if there's a spot available. So, this evening, we do have one speaker, Dr. Michael Spurber, who's going to speak to us for three minutes. Dr. Spurber, I understand you're going to come and sit here as you address the council, which is wonderful. And I always like to mention, this is not a time when you'll hear the council have conversation back and forth with our speakers. It's not a question-and-answer kind of time, so even if you don't hear the council responding, it always is a time for us to take in what people are offering, to learn, and to reflect on it, and we do really appreciate you being here. Dr. Spurber, I have Vice President Crowley is our timekeeper, so he will set the timer for three minutes, and if you hear his timer go off, if you could draw your remarks to a close at that point. And I will turn the floor over to you if you would just begin with your name and address for the record, and then, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Mike Spurber. My address is 15 Ives Street in Beverly. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm going to start with some words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate; only love can do that." There is an abode, five, maybe half a mile from here, of darkness and hate, to which I'd like to call your attention. If you enter the gazebo in Beverly Commons and start to climb up the steps, you'll notice that there's a sign attached to the gazebo which says, "No loitering." Now, a gazebo is a place to gaze, and you need time to gaze at the natural surroundings to shift from cognition to sensory awareness. When you do that, you have intuitions and creativity. And if you can't loiter, loiter is unstructured time. You can't gaze. You can't do what you're invited to do. So, there's what's called a cognitive dissonance, there's something that's wrong. Why is there a "no loitering" sign? Well, there's a widespread problem of homelessness. There are two ways to treat the problem. One is by criminalizing the homeless, and the other is by rehabilitating the homeless. The Beverly Rotary Club renovated that gazebo, and they put the sign attached, they attached the sign "No Loitering" to it. I spoke with the president of the Beverly Rotarians, and he said he would be here this evening. I can't see if that's the case, but I felt that... Is that a sign to me? I wanted to thank everybody for allowing me to speak for a few minutes, and just a quick quote from Margaret Mead, "Never doubt the ability of a small group of thoughtful, committed people to change the world." Indeed, that's the only way that the world is changed. I'm sure we can change things in Beverly to make things better around the world.
Thank you very much, Dr. Spurber. Thanks for being here with us, and thank you for your words and your time. Dr. Spurber, you are welcome to stay as much of the meeting as you would like, but I always like to tell people, don't feel like you have to stay with us the whole time. You're welcome to get up at any point. You don't have to wait for a pause, but you're welcome to be with us for as long as you'd So, we do have some public hearings, as I mentioned, but they are not posted until 7:30 is the first one, so why don't we go to some of our routine business? We'll go to acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. We do have two sets of minutes that we can approve this evening, and the first are regular city council meeting minutes from January 6th, 2025. These had a Scrubner's error to correct the spelling of a name that's been corrected, and so for that, it would be to approve as corrected. And then, the minutes from Legal Affairs Committee meeting, January 13th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those sets of minutes with the noted correction to the regular city council minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries eight... Eight-zero. Okay, thank you. I thought I lost him. All right, eight-zero. Thank you, everybody.
I think we did lose him.
I did lose him. Let's go to communications from his honor, the mayor, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 32, a grant for $1,633,964, a 911 support initiative grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, to assist public safety dispatch services in providing enhanced 911 service.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 33, a grant of $137,749.54, 911 department training grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, to be used by the Beverly Police Department for 911 training courses and overtime coverage, as well as for training meeting space.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 34, a request for a budget transfer of $218,000 from the FY25 Reserve for Collective Bargaining, 11324/57810, into police department budget as a result of recently agreed-upon Beverly Police Patrolman contract.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set a public hearing.
Order number 35, a request for a budget transfer of $115,750 into various municipal department budgets to fund costs with the recently settled contract between the City of Beverly and Beverly Municipal Employees Association.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property also to set a public hearing.
Order number 36, a donation for $100 from Ms. Harriet Feinstein of Beverly to be used to support the Silent Witness Project.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 37, an appointment for Gina Vilonas of 12 Baker Avenue to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 38 and 39, from the city clerk, renewal of licensing.
Please refer 38 and 39 both to Legal Affairs.
Order number 40, from Counsel Rotundo and Spang, proposed ordinance prohibiting the sale of animals.
Counselor Rotundo or Counselor Spang, anything you'd like to say about order 40 before it's referred?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, please.
Order number 41, from Counsel Spang, a proposed amendment to ordinance 270-41, parking prohibited at all times.
Counselor Spang, anything that you'd like to say?
Okay.
Let's refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 42, from the city clerk, a request for a home rule petition requesting that the city... Do they want to excuse before or after?
You can finish your thing.
Requesting that the city be permitted to locate all city polls at a single location for the special primary and general elections to fill the vacancy existed in the Office of Representative and the General Court from the 6th Essex District.
Thank you, Counselor Bowen and Counselor Rotundo. You're both recusing yourselves. Thank you. We'll give them a moment to recuse themselves, and then we can talk about this one on the floor, counselors. So, before we jump into any discussion or questions there might be, is there a motion to approve order 42 from the clerk?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? I know we have Assistant Solicitor Bethel Nixon here to help us with this. Counselor St. Hilaire.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I just have a question as to, is this our policy moving forward? Is this a special one-time situation to deal with a situation this year? Have we thought more long-term about, you know, this type of approach? I don't mind it for this year, but I do have concern about all elections moving forward, you know, moving in that direction. So, I guess if there's any thought about that, Ms. Kent?
Me? I was gonna say, Ms. Kent, I feel like that you might be able to help into that.
Yes, so I think it's just for this, for me anyways, it's just for the special election because it was not foreseen. There's not a lot left in the budget for two more elections, and it would just be a lot more cost-efficient to have it in one spot where our office can work and less workers, less police, and... Yes.
Assistant Solicitor Al Nixon, do you want to add to that?
And to clarify, the home rule petition is restricted to the special election, both the primary and a general.
Thank you.
So, this vote tonight would only be for those elections.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. That helps.
Thank you. All set, Counselor St. Hilaire?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Hausmann?
Just one question to clarify. The order does not refer to a date, and it's my understanding that the Speaker of the House would be the one to set the date. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I assume that there's communication between the city and the Speaker of the House's office on that question.
Correct. Yeah.
I don't have significantly more to add to that. Yes, there are, there has been some communication and a request for dates that might be available for the space that is requested also.
Thank you.
But yes, it is the Speaker of the House that will eventually set it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Spang?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure, because I noticed that it's saying the one place would be the field house of the high school, but my understanding is that all schools would still be able to be in session if it's a weekday, just for people at home.
Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you. Great question, especially this year, Counselor Spang.
Yeah.
A lot of families would be wondering. Are there any other questions that counselors have? Any further discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve order 42. This is the request for a home rule petition for specifically this special election. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries seven-zero. Counselor Spang, thank you. Would you bring our colleagues back in? Thank you very much, Solicitor. Ms. Kent, we can pick back up with the final item in communications from other city officers and boards.
Order number 43, from Counsel Hausmann, a proposed ordinance amendment to indemnify municipal officers.
Counselor Hausmann, anything that you wanted to say about this one before it's referred? All right, we'll refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs then, please. We do have a little bit of time before our posted public hearing, so I would entertain a motion, there's a little bit of work that subcommittees just got that they could take care of, entertain a motion to take a brief break for some subcommittee work. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries nine-zero. We'll have Finance and Property stay here, Legal Affairs in the committee room, and
Back to us, or just came to us from the full council, I guess we'll start with order 32, which is a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety of $163,964 to assist with public safety dispatch services. I guess I would entertain a motion to approve this order. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Seems pretty straightforward. I would move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That approved, is approved three-zero. Okay.
Oh, I did not, sorry. There you go.
Okay, we'll take up order 33 next. This is a grant of $137,749, also from the Executive Office of Public Safety, and this is for 911 training courses, overtime coverage, and meeting space for some required training. And entertain a motion that we approve. So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This one is approved three-to-zero. Sorry, paper everywhere. Order 34, this is a budget transfer request for $218,000 from the FY25 Reserve for Collective Bargaining account into the police department budget for the recently settled Beverly Patrolmen's contract. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Oh, I think we need to set a public hearing. Sorry.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for a public hearing.
Yes, on the back of time.
Set a public hearing. What is the date, Lisa?
February 3rd.
February 3rd at 7:30 PM. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Order 35, we'll take up next. This is a budget transfer request for $115,750 into various municipal budgets to cover costs associated with the contract for the Beverly Municipal Employees Association. I would entertain a motion that we approve. Oh, I'm sorry. Set a public hearing. Mr. Dole?
I was just here to ask you a question about those two.
Okay.
But if it's properly set a public hearing, and I'll be available in thirty minutes of questions if you need to have.
Okay. And public hearing?
Two-three.
Two-three at, is that 7:45? 7:45 PM. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We're approved for a public hearing, February 3rd. Okay, and then lastly, we have a donation, order 36, from Ms. Harriet Feinstein to support the Silent Witness Program. I would entertain a motion that we accept that donation. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. That is approved. Thank you, Ms. Feinstein. Any other business committee members? I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Order number thirty-one, the City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty P.M. At one ninety-one Cabot Street, third floor, council chambers, relative to National Grid petition W zero three one oh five seven four nine one to install underground facilities on Cabot Street, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and forty north of intersection of Elliott Street to Cabot Street, and petitioning to install conduit from existing manhole on property at three thirty-three Cabot Street. And this was in the newspaper on January tenth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Our National Grid rep, Michael Kazadi, is here with us. Mr. Kazadi, if you would come to the podium if there's anything that you want to begin by offering about this petition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kazadi, and I'm representing National Grid at forty-four River Street. And yeah, for this job, we're petitioning to install conduit from an existing manhole on Cabot Street and run it about twenty feet to the property of three thirty-three Cabot due to the customer upgrading their electrical service.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kazadi. Counselors, are there any questions that you have on this petition? Any discussion? Were there any members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And counselors, we can actually take this on the floor. So is there a motion to approve order thirty-one? Is there any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero. Thank you very much. We do have a little bit of time before our seven forty-five hearing. I understand, Legal Affairs, you have one more item to take care of, so I'd entertain a motion for a break for some subcommittee work to take care of that. All those in favor? Carries nine zero. Thank you, everyone. I'll call the full council back to order from that subcommittee break because it is seven thirty, and we do have the first of our two posted public hearings for this evening. This is on order number thirty-one. Ms. Kent?
Order number thirty-one, the City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty P.M. At one ninety-one Cabot Street, third floor, council chambers, relative to National Grid petition W zero three one oh five seven four nine one to install underground facilities on Cabot Street, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and forty north of intersection of Elliott Street to Cabot Street, and petitioning to install conduit from existing manhole on property at three thirty-three Cabot Street. And this was in the newspaper on January tenth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Our National Grid rep, Michael Kazadi, is here with us. Mr. Kazadi, if you would come to the podium if there's anything that you want to begin by offering about this petition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kazadi, and I'm representing National Grid at forty-four River Street. And yeah, for this job, we're petitioning to install conduit from an existing manhole on Cabot Street and run it about twenty feet to the property of three thirty-three Cabot due to the customer upgrading their electrical service.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kazadi. Counselors, are there any questions that you have on this petition? Any discussion? Were there any members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And counselors, we can actually take this on the floor. So is there a motion to approve order thirty-one? Is there any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero. Thank you very much. We do have a little bit of time before our seven forty-five hearing. I understand, Legal Affairs, you have one more item to take care of, so I'd entertain a motion for a break for some subcommittee work to take care of that. All those in favor? Carries nine zero. Thank you, everyone. I'll call the full council back to order from that subcommittee break because it is seven thirty, and we do have the first of our two posted public hearings for this evening. This is on order number thirty-one. Ms. Kent?
Order number thirty-one, the City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty P.M. At one ninety-one Cabot Street, third floor, council chambers, relative to National Grid petition W zero three one oh five seven four nine one to install underground facilities on Cabot Street, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and forty north of intersection of Elliott Street to Cabot Street, and petitioning to install conduit from existing manhole on property at three thirty-three Cabot Street. And this was in the newspaper on January tenth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Our National Grid rep, Michael Kazadi, is here with us. Mr. Kazadi, if you would come to the podium if there's anything that you want to begin by offering about this petition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kazadi, and I'm representing National Grid at forty-four River Street. And yeah, for this job, we're petitioning to install conduit from an existing manhole on Cabot Street and run it about twenty feet to the property of three thirty-three Cabot due to the customer upgrading their electrical service.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kazadi. Counselors, are there any questions that you have on this petition? Any discussion? Were there any members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And counselors, we can actually take this on the floor. So is there a motion to approve order thirty-one? Is there any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero. Thank you very much. We do have a little bit of time before our seven forty-five hearing. I understand, Legal Affairs, you have one more item to take care of, so I'd entertain a motion for a break for some subcommittee work to take care of that. All those in favor? Carries nine zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Our National Grid rep, Michael Kazadi, is here with us. Mr. Kazadi, if you would come to the podium if there's anything that you want to begin by offering about this petition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kazadi, and I'm representing National Grid at forty-four River Street. And yeah, for this job, we're petitioning to install conduit from an existing manhole on Cabot Street and run it about twenty feet to the property of three thirty-three Cabot due to the customer upgrading their electrical service.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kazadi. Counselors, are there any questions that you have on this petition? Any discussion? Were there any members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And counselors, we can actually take this on the floor. So is there a motion to approve order thirty-one? Is there any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero. Thank you very much. We do have a little bit of time before our seven forty-five hearing. I understand, Legal Affairs, you have one more item to take care of, so I'd entertain a motion for a break for some subcommittee work to take care of that. All those in favor? Carries nine zero. Thanks, everyone. I'll call the full council back to order from that subcommittee break because we do have now our seven forty-five public hearing, and this is on order one.
Order number one, the City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven forty-five P.M. at one ninety-one Cabot Street, third floor, council chambers, relative to an appropriation to transfer funds into the amount of fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve from free cash to meet the required financial match obligation for a new patrol cabin boat for the Beverly Harbor Master Department. And this was in the newspaper on January tenth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. So in addition to our assistant city solicitors, Jessie Dolan-Beth Oldmixon, we've been joined by our harbor master, Peter Dickman. Thank you, Mr. Dickman, and our finance director, Brian Ailes. Mr. Ailes, I see you're ready to go at the podium. Thank you very much. We'll go to you.
Thank you very much. Madam President, good evening, counselors. You may recall this topic from your last meeting where we introduced the grant portion of this order, and I believe it was accepted at the last meeting. This, the order component that you're voting on this evening is to transfer the match component. So there's a twenty-five percent match for the overall grant. The grant award amount was for three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two seventy-two, which was dealt with last meeting. But the twenty-five percent match would require a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars to be matched by the city. The Harbor Management Authority has taken a vote to split that, so they'll be looking within their existing operating budget to cover half of the match, which is fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve. And the remaining half of fifty-eight, two, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve, we're seeking a transfer from the free cash certification, which occurred a couple of months ago. The general fund free cash certification was certified at ten million. The general fund Free Cash certification was certified at $10,713,896 back in December. So there are sufficient funds available to meet this request. Happy to answer any questions you have about the finances or the structure, as well as Mr. Dickman, who's here to talk about the actual boat if needed, or if you have any further questions about implementation timing or anything like that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. Councilors, are there any questions? Councilor Bowen.
Thank you. So in general, I appreciate every opportunity we get to match grant funding and other sources so that we're reducing the cost from the city budget or Free Cash or other sources. And I think that overall, this looks like a smart investment. And just wanted to hear a little bit more about that balancing of different ways the city could fund the match, the choice of Free Cash versus operating budget either this fiscal year or next fiscal year if it was within the cycle, and what some other competing priorities for Free Cash are at this point to ensure we're not earmarking money that we will later say, "Oh, if only we had $60,000 more dollars for."
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Ailes?
Sure. I mean, as we always discuss, there's never enough resources, right, to do everything we want to do in the city. Typically, when we have an opportunity to receive a grant and it requires a match component, it really depends on the department that's receiving the grant. In cases where it's a larger department that has a little bit more budgetary flexibility, we would likely look to that particular department to cover the match. Or if it's an enterprise fund, we would look to that enterprise fund, like the airport, to cover the match. Or, you know, if it were DPW, where there's a little bit more flexibility, or sometimes police can match some smaller grants and things like that. But where Mr. Dickman's budget, the Harbor Master budget, is a pretty tight budget. The resources don't exist to actually cobble together this amount of money within the budget without having serious impact on staffing abilities and things like that. So in this case, we felt it was the best option to go to Free Cash to request that transfer. In addition, there are other areas in the budget that you know that are yet to be settled. However, given the pending collective bargaining approvals that are before you in coming public meetings, we believe that a few of those resources are going to need to be looked to to help support those collective bargaining agreements. So that really wasn't an option we were comfortable with at this point in the fiscal year. The question about Free Cash, it's always an issue of competing demands around Free Cash. In most cases, we typically enter a fiscal year even before Free Cash is certified, knowing that there are some pending demands for Free Cash balances. And we always want to try to make sure that we're not depleting Free Cash to a level that we can't reasonably replenish back to a level that's within our stated targets in terms of our policies within the city and sound financial practice. In this case, this fiscal year, the other types of demands that we know are, will be coming in terms of requests to the council relate to the fire station work that's ongoing that was authorized with a loan order with an intent to buy down that loan order and not ultimately borrow for that portion or that phasing of the central fire station work. There has also been a commitment by the administration. Mayor Cahill has stated on numerous occasions that we'll be looking to Free Cash this year to support the road and sidewalk work for FY26, which in the past few years has been at about $2.7 million. So that's a significant amount as well. We also have policies around some transfers to reserves, the OPEB reserve, as well as the stabilization reserve. We look forward to reviewing those policies and having a robust discussion about that in the future and what might be appropriate in this climate, given some of the returns we've seen on some of those accounts. But that is still a discussion we need to have. So there are considerable demands, and there's always those that kind of pop up a little bit sooner than anticipated. So this is kind of a precursor to a discussion we hope to have in the very near future around some of the needs down at DPW's Fuel Depot and some work that has to happen in short order down there. But we haven't quite nailed down the scope and the cost of that yet, but we'll be forthcoming with some of that. But we think that might be in the three-quarters of a million-dollar range as well. So those are just some of the things that are competing right now for the available Free Cash. And then anything more than that, I would personally recommend that we get through the springtime where we know more accurately what our third-largest revenue stream for the city looks like, which is motor vehicle excise. Those billings go out in January, February. We tend to see the bulk of the revenues come in in March, so we know how we're trending compared to what we're anticipating coming in for revenue. And that then allows us to either be more comfortable with releasing a little bit more of the Free Cash balance, or in some cases, we may say, you know, it's not appropriate to release more, given that we don't think we're going to be able to replenish as much. So we start to get more and more cautious the further into the fiscal year we go. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Thank you, Councilor. Are there other questions from councilors on this one? All right. Were there any members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. And councilors, we can entertain this one on the floor as well. So is there a motion to approve Order One?
So...
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor. That carries nine zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes and Mr. Dickman, for being here with us. Ms. Kent, we can go to reports from committees unless you need a minute.
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Let's go to reports from committees then, please.
Order Number 32, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a $163,974 911 supportive incentive grant from EOPS S and OGR in research to assist public safety dispatch services and provide an enhanced 911 service, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order Number 33, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a $137,749,54 911 department training grant from EOPS S and OGR to be used by the Beverly Police Department for a 911 training course, overtime coverage, as well as training space. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. Carries nine zero.
Order Number 34, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a request for a budget transfer of $218,000 from the FY25 Reserve for Collective Bargaining into Police Department budget, has set a public hearing for February 3rd at 7:30 PM.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee. February 3rd, 7:30 PM. All those in favor? That carries nine zero.
Order Number 35, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a request for a budget transfer of $115,750 into various municipal department budgets to fund costs with the recently settled contract between the City of Beverly and the Beverly Municipal Employees Association, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set this public hearing for February 3rd at 7:45 PM.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee. All those in favor? Carries nine zero.
Order Number 36, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a donation of $100 from Ms. Harriet Feinstein of Beverly to be used to support the silent witness project, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. That carries nine zero, with our thanks to Ms. Feinstein for that donation.
And Order Number One, we already did, so...
Order Number Four, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Catherine Keef O'Hare to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Beverly Public Library, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. That carries nine zero.
Order Number Five, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Ivy Mahan to serve on the Board of Trustees at the Beverly Public Library, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. Carries nine zero as well.
Order Number Six, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Marshall Handley to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Beverly Public Library, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. Carries nine zero.
Order Number 11, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Martin Lawler to serve on the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. That carries nine zero.
And we did the public hearing on the floor, correct?
Yes. Well, thank you to all those folks. We just approved a bunch of appointments and reappointments. And thank you to everybody who was willing to serve on those boards and commissions. It's important work.
Order Number Seven, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Kevin Andrews to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. That carries nine zero.
Order Number Eight, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for William Cosmas to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. That carries nine zero as well.
Order Number Nine, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Brian Ailes to serve on the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. Carries nine zero.
Order Number 25, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a city clerk's license for lodging house probationary license updates for 490 Renn Tool Street, recommend the license be granted.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. That carries nine zero.
Order Number 24, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a letter from Captain Krailing related to the lodging houses in the city, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Receive and place on file.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file as recommended by the subcommittee. All those in favor? Aye. Carries nine zero.
Order Number 27, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a lodging house probationary license updates for 91-93 Cabot Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. Carries nine zero.
Order Number 38, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealers License for AJ's Mobile Detailing LLC, 453 Renn Tool Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. Carries nine zero.
Order Number 39, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an application for a lodging house license for the Will House at 148 Elliott Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye. That carries nine zero.
Do you want me to report them back? Yes, you can report them back. So the next three are ordinances that all went to Legal Affairs, came back out, but we'll discuss them in more detail next meeting because we can't vote on them this evening because they are ordinance changes. Sorry.
Order Number 41, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposed amendment for ordinance 270-41, parking prohibited at all time, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Submit the accompanying amended ordinance and recommend its adoption pending publication and final passage.
Thank you. Second guess me, so...
Order Number 40, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposed ordinance prohibiting the sale of animals, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Submit the accompanying ordinance and recommend its adoption pending publication and final passage.
Thank you.
Order Number 43, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposed ordinance amendment to gentrify municipal officers, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Submit the ordinance and recommend its adoption pending publication and final passage.
Thank you. So, councilors, all three of those proposed ordinances... Oh, councilor Stein.
If I could just ask a question. I guess I'm not clear why... It seems like other times we would take a vote and we have to vote twice. Do we wait until it's published before we do that first vote?
Yes.
And then for the public, in case anybody had comments or thoughts about it? It sounds like they're not going for public hearings. They're just going to be published in the paper and then we're going to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So for proposed ordinance changes, they are published in the paper, get two full readings here and two votes. But not typically a public hearing, that is correct. Okay. Yes. Thanks. But I will just take that opportunity to say that, as with anything, members of the public should feel free to send any of their feedback or thoughts to members of the council, for sure. All right. Are there any announcements, reminders, anything from city councilors at this point? All right. Well, our next regular meeting is on February 3rd. We do have two public hearings that we just set. Those are at 7:30 and 7:45. We also have a presentation from Kestrel Education. They'll be here presenting the beginning of our meeting in our presentation spot, so we'll look forward to that. And as we just heard, we have three proposed ordinances or ordinance changes that we'll be able to take up for discussion and a first vote at that meeting as well. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? That carries nine zero. Thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth. Have a good night, everyone. We adjourn.